Hello.
See, this is in Salt Lake City.
Yep.
I'll make sure we know.
So let me know how to send file.
She did say she had it.
Okay. Send me the email address.
This is so deep.
Not for you.
You got chopped and shit cooked.
I passed up any of the other stuff.
Evan, how you doing? Oh, thanks a lot. We have some bullet my thoughts on. But have trust by tomorrow.
Well, that'd be great.
I mean, they leave good, yeah.
We can sit here and say, I don't know.
Right.
And you know, I just put in a rap.
No, I hear that, yeah. I mean, when do you go to Salt Lake City?
Oh, I can't.
Thanks, Evan. Yeah, it's good.
They should have never supported. No, he said he was, but then the next day Trump was stupid.
You know, my, one of my sisters will tell me her kids won't have to. How are you?
Good.
I know, but you can also because they post their own personal.
You're feeling good about those.
Yes, that would've been true.
That is true.
No, I'll give you that stuff tomorrow morning.
Of course, you have to say sure.
Obviously.
First, first, first.
I did one, you were telling.
Separate votes, you may know.
The first two votes are sort of everybody.
And that's his real spell was up there.
I know, I've been having a loss.
Oh, we can check. There's never any guarantees.
Yeah.
Just want you to know.
Father coming home.
You know, many.
It's very special.
I call to order the June meeting of the school committee for the Menman Regional High School. Are there any members of the public who'd like to make a brief comment? Seeing none, we move on to the chair's report. The chair has a number of items that he needs to bring up. Related to our July meeting, two filling appointments. The first item is to remind the members, and especially the newer members, that July 12th is going to be our organizational meeting. In the organizational meeting, we elect a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary for a one-year term. To be, um, to be able to run for chair or vice chair, you need to have been a member for at least one year. The maximum term of office for an officer is five consecutive years. After five consecutive years, you have to not be an officer for at least one year before you can run again. Anyone meeting these qualifications is well, is welcome to stand for officer position at the next meeting. Be aware of the time commitment to have one of these positions. And as a technical note, typically, the officers develop recommendations regarding subcommittees over the summer. They present them to the full school committee for a vote in September to get the approval of the school committee. Thus, the current subcommittees remain in effect until September. So that's all my comments about the organizational meeting, which will be on July 12th. Now, a weightier issue is that weighted, weighted voting per the new regional agreement begins July 1st. And there are all sorts of complications in implementing weighted voting. We could move to a fully automated voting system. But it has to be one that can handle weighted voting and is capable of being reprogrammed every year since the weights will be updated every year. No, every year. I think we just do it in July.
Presenting who's here.
Oh, no, but the weights, no, but the weights per town remain the same. So as far as the software is concerned, it doesn't care who's here and who's not here. As long as it knows the percentage rate from each town. So it's not like your percentage increases when you're, if there are some people not present. It's just that you're not going to have 100% of the entire votes at the end. So it has to be reprogrammed every year. Now, the chair has been reluctant to invest, to investigate and invest in an automated system at this time. These systems may be quite expensive, and it does seem to me that we can wing it for a few meetings to get the feel of how this works. So we can better, make a better decision as to whether we want to keep a less formal system or move to a purchased automated system. And I take that especially in mind since a year from now, well, we have, a year from July, we only have 10 members. It's going to be even a simpler thing to do, and it does seem to me that I don't want to, wouldn't want to spend a lot of money. So my recommendation, and I sent you a notice on this, is that mathematically, it's easy to come up with a few guidelines by which you can determine whether a motion passes or fails without actually doing the formal mathematics for each vote. And my belief is those situations, and I did send them to you, will cover most of our votes, maybe even as much as 80 or 90% of our votes. Now, that means that there are some votes in which we do have to do weighted vote. So what the chair took the liberty of doing is he came up with a, he developed a small Macintosh application which we can use for the roll call votes where necessary. And I believe that it will be adequate until we can make a more formal decision of whether we want to go to a purchased system. And maybe we'll do a little research over the summer to see if the chair's concern, or whatever the chair is at that time concerned is about the price of such a system, is negligible, or it's something that you just want to go out and purchase and deal with any of this other stuff. So the reason for not going all the time to a roll call vote is that roll call vote can be very time consuming. And, you know, time giving a minute or two. But when you add up all these minute or twos over the meeting, that can be inconsiderable now. So I think that it is desirable, if reasonably possible, to avoid going to a roll call vote for any vote that you have. And I think it is reasonably and simply possible to do so. So, but if there are any really major objections to this, I'll be happy to listen to them, Vince.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Jeff. It seems to me that, well, two separate issues. One is, should we dispense with roll call votes? And I think we should not because now that we've moved to weighted voting, you really need to have a, an actual vote count at some point. And if you need it at some point, you should have it as soon as you cast the votes and you can make the decisions accordingly. Moreover, I would suggest that it's possible for us to have a fully automated system at no extra cost. And all we need to do, since I assume Kevin did the allocation of vote, is to do an Excel spreadsheet template. And you plug in, you do it once a year. You have the total number of votes on the template. And clerk or someone else designated simply sits there as we go around and everybody casts their vote. You put a yes in one, a yes column, or a no in the no column. And after we get through the table, you hit the total thing, and you know what the total is. And you have to build a function into the Excel spreadsheet to tell you what the percentage is of the vote. And so you know if it's a 50% threshold, or a two-thirds, or three-quarter threshold. I think you can do that with Excel quite easily for no cost. Am I wrong, Kevin?
Well, I, I think you may have seen some of the samples in the packet that point to that. But I think that the application that the chair developed with the Mac can also automate it for no cost at all. So I think that there is a solution that.
Yeah, I'm not wedded to Excel versus Mac. Point is that this is, this is easy stuff. All, all we have to do is go around the table and have someone put, put the number in the right column and then hit total. And it costs us nothing. We know the results immediately at the cost of a couple of minutes to go around the table. And how many votes do we take a night at the most?
I, I think we extend our meetings by about our average around 20 minutes.
Well.
And my method is.
Well, we only have 12 meetings a year. I mean.
But, but Vince. We have, when we have a majority, we don't do a roll call vote in our current data grading system. We just say a majority, we count the heads and we're done.
But because we don't have weighted voting, if you have weighted voting, I mean, take a look at this example. If Arlington votes with a majority, then the majority carries. Well, how do you know what the majority is until you count up the weighted votes?
Now, the majority meaning that if Arlington, and with the exception if you get 15 members present, if Arlington votes with the majority of members, then the mathematics say that there is no combination of members by which that vote does not carry.
So at what point?
So physical majority of members, if Arlington votes together with them, it passes.
So at what point do you actually tabulate the votes?
There's no need to tabulate, just like we don't tabulate a weight when we do a majority vote. Mathematically, it is not possible for the vote to fail.
I don't see the advantage. I see a lot of advantage in having an actual vote count. And especially since we can do it for free with a couple of minutes a time.
20 minutes. For some, yeah. Jack.
I'm certainly for transparency and making sure that stuff is accurate, recorded, and most importantly, accurately collected. But I think there's a lot of votes that we take that are really routine. Things like tonight, the approval of disposal of equipment, and the school calendar. And there's an awful lot of stuff that we vote on that's virtually unanimous or near unanimous. And, and maybe the compromise is, is that we just do the verbal vote. And if there are three or four dissenting, then we're into the territory where we might, you know, cross that threshold, and then we do the quick tally using an Excel spreadsheet. But not every single vote, because there's too much routine stuff, I think, that we just say yep, 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 yep to.
Right, and you could have someone just call, you know.
You're right.
Most of the votes are unanimous, at least many of them. And so we can do that. If it passes that cut and nobody calls for a vote, fine. But if someone wants to call for a vote, all I'm suggesting is we can get the actual numbers very easily. All we have to do is have that template ready to go.
Carrie.
Because I'm on the officers' subcommittee, I did get to look at Jeff's model earlier. I did test it out. A little skeptical, yeah, okay, because I've also done it. When Jeff did it, I'm sorry. When Jeff did it. And I also have done a spreadsheet thing in Excel which would work. So I can hear both sides. I personally don't mind at all having a roll call record of who voted yay and who voted no, and who abstained, and who left the room to go to the bathroom so they weren't present during the vote. You know, that, that, to me, we're here representing other people, and I think our constituents in the hometown have a right to know how we're voting. That said, the unanimous vote, obviously, does not need to be counted. You know, that's pretty easy to plug in. So I think I'm leaning in the direction that, that Jack is suggesting and, and set some limit which, which might change based on how many people are here a night, you know. And calculate what, what, you know, subtract the largest town present from, you know, the, from the total vote. And that would probably tell you how many could not be there that night. Because if the chair can declare a unanimous vote, or can declare a pass similar to what most moderators will do at town meeting these days, that's, that's okay to do. But I'm also not ashamed, if I'm the one, if I'm the odd man out there, folks know, I'm not ashamed to let people know that either.
Other comments? Very well, then we will start with this procedure at our next meeting as a trial. I'll probably, at the beginning of the meeting, have a 10 to 15 minutes, we do a few trial runs on various voting procedures to see how it shakes out. And then we'll move on to it. If it doesn't work out for us, we'll be calling more forms. And perhaps go the automated route.
Did another person just now that this was a decision that I've been thinking about? I was just waiting.
Well, this, I didn't see a lot of, we can take a vote if you want to. Wouldn't be a weighted vote yet.
What did this refer to?
This is going to a less formal system at first, rather than each vote being a roll call vote.
Did Jack's, opposed or something?
Well, Jack's idea is, looking at my statistics here, let's say, for example, that Arlington is not present. If Arlington is not present, but there is at least 12 members present, then there's no mathematical combination of four no votes or four minority votes that would prevent something from passing. However, if there are nine members present, there is a combination in which more than two votes would prevent the majority from prevailing. So the number that you use to determine what the amount is that would prevent something from passing does depend to some extent on the number of people present. Now, if Arlington is present, then there is no mathematical combination where Arlington's majority does not prevail. Except, there's one exception. If 15 members are present and there are exactly seven minority votes, then you have to do a roll call vote. So I'm saying that mathematically, I've determined, which I'll go check it over, Jack, the, the situation in which it is impossible for the majority not to prevail. And whenever the majority does not prevail, you have to go to a roll call. I believe that these situations, we cover 80 to 90% of our votes. And I can show you the mathematics if you like. It's very simple. Nothing complicated about it. And the rules to. So we could, you know, you could say, you say, given unanimous isn't going to work, this is often one abstention, or one this, or one that. So by definition, your rules get a little bit more convoluted. I just went to the, you know, the maximum extreme. What is the maximum number of no votes or minority votes you could have that prevents something from passing or prevailing? Yes.
Just a procedural question. If we go with this, is there anything that would keep a member from asking for a roll call vote?
Um, well, then you have to decide if you want to have a, a vote on whether a roll call vote should be taken. Or, or what you could do, what you could do is you could just say that we can have a policy by which whatever any member wants a roll call vote, a roll call vote is called. Or say when it is, when there are two members who want a roll call vote. Whatever you want to do, you could do, and it's fine. Mary Ellen.
I think I would like to see one meeting do roll call votes and see how much time we really waste. Because as she said, if somebody calls for a roll call vote, then you've already voted once, then you go back and vote again. And that to me is a waste of time. There must be a reason why the roll call vote even came up. And personally, I don't think it takes that much time. I, I would hate, you know, there's enough finish, I would hate to see someone check us not doing this and then be challenged down the road in ways that we can't verify our votes because we didn't do a roll call vote which was recommended.
Uh, you can verify the vote in the following sense. Let's say for, let me give you an example. Let's say that Arlington is present, and there are 16 members present. And there's a motion at the table, and nine members vote yes, including Arlington. Then if the chair were to say there are nine yeses, including Arlington, and seven no's, and that went in the record.
But you don't know who.
It doesn't matter because mathematically, there's no combination in which the minority would prevail.
No, but as Carrie said, I would prefer it to be transparent and not my term no, that I voted yes or no on.
Well, we have, but we don't do that now.
No, but we're changing the rules because we're going to a roll call.
Yes, we are, Jack.
Jeff, I'm somewhere in between. You know, I, I share Mary Ellen's goal of not wanting to have any of our votes be subject to criticism or second guessing. My sense is that the rest of the school committee members, and I know this is terrific, but aren't quite as comfortable with the mathematical relationships because we haven't spent the time that you have spent. And so I guess I would ask that maybe in the beginning, we lean towards more roll call votes until people get comfortable with those proportional relationships and get a better intuitive sense of when they're really unnecessary versus when that, that they might matter.
Sharon.
I just want to go with my record of saying I'm very comfortable with the definitions that you did, Mr. Chair. And I didn't go through all of them, but I did, you know, peruse them. And it just makes logical sense to me that there's a certain number that, that makes a difference. So I'm fine with, with just forging ahead.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, it seems to me that Pam's suggestion is a good one, which is, you know, for most of the votes that we had, they're unanimous. You look around, Jeff, you can see. If you, if you simply adopt a policy whereby if any one member calls for a roll call vote, then we do a roll call vote, then, you know, it may well be that one vote seems like a small number. But you can look around the room, and you can see, you know, is my calling, is my calling for a roll call vote really, you know, a waste of time? But it seems to me that, that, that there are a lot of permutations you could have. Combinations of people abstaining, combinations of people not being in the room, not showing up. If one person says, you know, I really think we ought to have a roll call. It seems to me we ought to have a roll call.
Other comments? Jennifer.
I don't see any problems since most of the votes, you just put down who voted against, you can figure out who voted for. Why can't we just make a policy for that?
Subtract it from the total, and you know what the rest was.
Right. But for very few people, if, if both votes pass with one or two people abstaining or voting against, then that, I think, would be very easy to add.
And it's very easy to calculate on that spreadsheet.
Yeah.
It's pre-filled with a Y and it's just not going to put it in the spreadsheet because speaking without your.
Actually, there are four, four states for any individual. You could be in favor, opposed, abstention, or not present. So your spreadsheet, the reason why I don't want to do Excel is that when you type in an Excel spreadsheet, there's a fair amount of mistakes that you can make. And that could, you know, consume time, and you can get a bad answer or whatnot. So by having a dedicated program, it makes it much less likely, as long as the software's written right, which we hope we'll experiment with a little bit. It's, that's why I wrote a dedicated program, because I was concerned about doing an Excel spreadsheet. But so there are four states. There are four states, you need.
Well, they're presented in a.
This, this is faster.
You could make it numerical. One equals yes, two equals no, three, but, and then.
It self reads a Y, no problem.
No, I understand, but it's one.
It's very.
But what I have is faster. Do you want to see? I'll show you later.
I just wanted to respond to Jennifer. The problem with counting the no's and then assuming that what isn't a no is a yes is that it actually doesn't work that way.
You have to count the extensions as well. No's and extensions, but still.
People that are not in presence, you know, the ones who walk away from the table. The extensions and the no's. Everybody else, like elimination is a yes.
Well, Alex, you, you need to count the yes, and everybody else is a no, or a, you know, abstention.
No, because you walk away from the table, and that's, that's not.
That's another thing.
Without a yes, what's the point?
So the, I think that you have to, if you're going to go that. So the, I think that you have to, if you were going to go that route, you'd have to enter into the record. The no's and the extensions separately, in order for the people to feel comfortable with the result. But still, it's going to take less time than doing the entire roll call vote. So what we could do, we could do it either of those two. We could do it any of the ways that you want to do it. I don't care, I don't mind. I enjoy our meetings. Game of Thrones isn't on Tuesday. What do I care what time it gets on? So we could do it any way you want. You can do everything as a roll call. You can just rely on my mathematical intuition. You can rely on my mathematical intuition, but allow an individual to demand a roll call vote, or two individuals, whatever you want to do. Or you could do my brilliant mathematical intuition, plus register the nays and the extensions in the record. It's going to take long, since we have such an incredibly competent recorder. Alice.
So, I respect your brilliant mathematical intuition, and I agree.
Which needs to be checked.
I agree with your concept and principle. However, your brilliant mathematical intuition is a regional agreement. So I didn't mention it. And so since this is a new agreement that's been recorded on Friday, it doesn't make sense for the first time out of the category for the original agreement to be used the way it was directed.
The regional agreement does not specify a roll call vote. All it specifies is that mathematically, no, the way your vote is being handled. So it's silent.
But the complexity of what's happening behind the scenes of the vote is always something that gets questioned and interpreted, and people get confused, public gets confused. And I think that in cases, but Jack said I almost never agree with you, Jack.
So I change my...
In cases where, you know, if three people vote no, or someone, obviously, you can't, you know...
You do need to count, or if there are nine people, three voting no.
So it seems, it seems like it would be a good idea to have some more rational system that eliminates some of those roll call votes, or just do what the regional agreement says for the first little bit, so that the public sees that we're actually... Understands, let's not say sees, that they understand what's happening. But it is not, this is pretty complex. I mean, it's actually very simple, and I understand that, but it is, from the public's point of view, probably pretty complicated.
Carrie?
I'm going to make a motion. Let's see how it goes. For the first two meetings after July one... For the first two meetings after July one, we will calculate the value of the actual vote by whatever seems the most efficient method to do that, and bring it up again in the fall, after we've taken that experience. So we use the first two meetings...
Just say July in August?
Because then we... It'll be in August, it's July and September again. And then in October, we'll talk about it again.
As I say, since Game of Thrones is not on Tuesday night, I enjoy our meetings, and I don't mind doing it for another twenty minutes or so. So I'm happy to do whatever the school committee wants to do.
Keep those cookies coming.
Please, please don't say that, Carrie. Okay, so there's motions, there's seconds?
Seconds.
Very good.
Then we would calculate the weight of the vote, like whatever means is most efficient, which means if it's a unanimous vote, or there's one person voting no, it's very easy to calculate the weight of the vote.
If a person calls for a roll call.
Well, we don't need a roll call, because you're going to know, okay?
Well, you don't know...
You might, you might need a roll call vote if we don't recognize the person who's sitting in that chair and we need to ask the name. But it's very easy. If one person votes no, the table is filled in with yeses. You know what the weight of the one no vote is. You subtract that from the total present, and you have the weight of the vote. Very easily. But I mean, for two, for two meetings that we do, one where we have to have the calculated weight of the vote.
We had a second discussion, Jack.
I don't have any, I'm not trying to prolong the discussion. I am fine with the, let's go with the flow and just see how it plays out after the first two meetings. My only concern with your motion is your use of the word whichever way is most efficient. Because if you went around this table, you might have six different definitions of which way is most efficient. So I don't think that's a standard that we can use.
I have a table that will do it. Anybody can come up with a table that will do it. And you just plug it in and print it.
I think he's referring to the ambiguity...
Gives you the results of a couple of votes.
This ambiguity in terms of, under what conditions would you not have the roll call?
Well, you don't, we don't have to go around the table and hear fifteen people say yes, if only one person weighs their hand to no. So you're going to, the one person that voted no, gets an end in the column, and everybody else stays the yes. It's the same as a roll call vote, without taking the time to go around the table.
So you're saying that, that, under what circumstances would this method be applicable? If there's only one no?
Can I offer a friendly amendment? Instead of saying whichever method is most efficient, can we instead say, we will give the chair discretion over the, during the first two months, as to how the table will vote, and when to use a weighted vote, and will reassess in October?
Well, it's always a weighted vote.
No, I understand that. But what do you use for roll call votes? Sorry. But can we change whatever method is most efficient to give the chair discretion?
Likewise, you don't have to have a roll call vote to have a recorded vote by the chair.
I think, Alice, there is an excellent point, which is, the agreement says that we're going to do this by a weighted vote. It doesn't say that we can estimate what the weight of the vote is. It says that, in order, for example, in order to pass the annual budget combined total weight equal to, or exceeding sixty-six point six seven percent. If someone simply says, "What was the weight of the vote in any one particular vote?" If we don't actually evaluate the vote, we can't answer that question.
You can say it's greater than fifty percent, but so do I, right?
Yeah, but I have a point as well, Pam. I don't see that we have a whole lot of latitude.
Carrie's going to help her, then. It would provide you with the exact, it just doesn't have to have everybody say it at the same time. It would record the votes. A's, A's, absences, extensions, all of it. It would give you the exact percentage.
And so then when does it get tabulated?
Oh, it gets tabulated instantly. Sitting right there. Sitting right here. I'll, I'll help Liz, I'll bring my little iPad.
Oh, so you're saying, your motion is to actually tabulate the votes in real time?
Yes, to calculate the weight of the vote in real time.
That's all I'm asking for.
Raise your hand up, Ford.
No, I don't. Because my vote doesn't mean anything.
Alice, it does play for music, enjoy it, one more day.
Believe me, I'm going to be happy if we get the yes. I don't care about any...
Just that whatever spreadsheet or whatever you use for the purpose should be distributed to all school committee members, all people on the website, so people can see how the evaluation's made, and all the cell definitions, stuff like that. So that it is very clear, and there should be no, no fumbling going on in the first place of this process.
Mary Ellen.
That spreadsheet is compiled from a public record, because it's, you'll go down in those files, for instance, five, so you can pick whatever it is. It's my name, it'll be a record of that.
May I answer the question?
Is your proposal...
My, my suggestion, the question for me then would be, do we print it and say, here's the hard copy? Or can we save the sheet so that at the end of the meeting, Liz has an Excel spreadsheet with sixteen sheets in it, because there were sixteen votes? But it's, it's, once it's set up, it's relatively easy to make. Also, however easy to screw up.
That's, that's the problem with using Excel.
But I can lock, I can lock the cells that you don't want to change.
Yeah, but here's the, here's the thing. To, you know, I've been doing computer programs since nineteen seventy.
Me too.
Seventy, yeah.
When you punch cards.
Paper, tape.
Sixty-four, but that's just because I'm old.
So the thing is, is that, how many people here are going to be able to take on your Excel spreadsheet if you're not here? Now, you'd have to be trained, and, and, you know, every time you have a new Mac...
I'm trained, mine, you know, you meet people. There's a Y.
Sometimes people can get trained.
A Y and an N.
We need probably like four people. So there's a motion at the table. Any further discussion of motion at the table? All in favor of the motion at the table, please raise your hand. Yeah, let's see, we got fourteen, so thirteen, and then one abstention. There you go.
I also was wondering how the newspaper would report, would describe your estimated, it couldn't possibly be less than or more than.
He was sleeping at seven.
He's pretty darned good. He'll figure it out.
The math is the math.
The math is the math, that's what it is.
Has Carrie checked your math?
I did, I did check his math, and he is, he is correct. But I don't think it's transparent.
So who's going to bring along the computers?
Not me.
Whoever the officers are are going to be sitting there doing this.
It doesn't have to be an officer. All we know is that the recorder should not be in charge of doing this, because the recorder is busy. It can be any member, it doesn't have to be an officer, any member who's familiar with using the software. Now, the other issue is, I made a suggestion that I'm not really that fond of, but let's discuss it for a few minutes. Because this has been an issue that has been brought to my attention. In the new regional agreement, perhaps an oversight, perhaps on purpose, I think it's an oversight, the language of the new regional agreement talks about a weighted majority of those present. Not present and voting, but present. Because it's present, a person who abstains is present. And since they're not voting yes, their vote counts as a no. So in many circumstances, a person who is abstaining wants to abstain because they don't want their vote to count, for whatever reason. Either they don't have enough information about what's happening, or they weren't at that meeting, or for whatever reason, they're not happy. Sometimes they'd be happy that it effectively counts as a no, other times they wouldn't. So we cannot, because it's part of the regional agreement, we cannot impact the meaning of that. If it's part of our bylaws, we could change it, we could look at Roberts' Rules of Order, we could cite Preston, and all the things. But because it's part of a newly voter regional agreement, we really have to stick to the letter. So, of course, it is fairly common for a person to be out of the room at the bathroom, and they're effectively not present. So a workaround, which has its own issues, would be that as a courtesy for a person who does not want their vote to count, for whatever reason, if they are away from the table, we count that as effectively being outside of the room, and therefore they are not present. Now, the problem of that is you have to watch your quorum. Because you need nine people around the table, even to be able to take a vote. So my question is, what is the feeling? And this doesn't come up that often. It's not often that important, but it does come up every once in a while. It becomes important. So it's not something that we have to worry about for a while. But, and reading the rules and figuring out how to proceed for July came to my attention. So I bring, so I came up with a workaround that I have mixed feelings about. So I'd like to know the feelings of the membership as to whether you just want to ignore the issue for now, and let it abstention be no, or would you want to have this kind of gentleman's out, you're away from the table, you don't have a vote? Jack?
I had focused on this, Jeff, I remember I saw you talking about. I think your workaround is a very practical alternative. What I was thinking about is, we often have recorded the votes, you know, eight in favor, three opposed, two out of the room, or something like that. But we also have people who come late to meetings, I don't know who that... And people who leave early. And so those votes will be kind of permanently out of the room. And so I, you know, that you'll have to reflect their lack of presence when they're coming and going late or early. To me, it just seems like if you're out of the room temporarily, you got to be treated the same way. So I think your workaround is the practical extension of that.
Mary Ellen.
And you're asking people to purposely leave the room if they want to abstain, instead of being a no vote?
If a person wants their vote, you see, one of the reasons of having an abstention is for the person who, for whatever reason, does not want to impact a vote. So in the, in the new regional agreement, an abstention is effectively a no vote.
It's always been a no vote, but an abstention is...
No, it's not always a no vote, it doesn't...
My understanding under Roberts' Rules, it's a no vote. I'm not finished, by the way. So if I want to abstain, I stay in the room the same. I don't think that it's appropriate to ask if you want to abstain to walk out of the room.
No, an abstention will stay at the table. It's a person who wants their vote not to count who could go away from the table. Because they don't want it to count effectively as a no vote.
That makes no sense to me.
For instance, for instance, you weren't here at the last meeting, can you approve the minutes for this meeting? Typically, people abstain because they weren't here. They can, you know, it's not a no vote. If they, you can't, under, under the new agreement... Yes, I know you can.
You can.
And now, you know, fine point, you can watch the meeting online and come back and vote. It's pretty painful to watch one of our meetings online, by the way. But I've done it. So in, in an instance like that, somebody might not want their abstention from the vote on the minutes, or some matter of greater import because they missed the last meeting where there was a thorough discussion to impact the outcome of the vote. In that instance, at that person's option, under what Jeff is suggesting, that person could leave the room, rather than have their abstention intended to be a position of neutrality, count instead as a no vote.
Just as a clarification.
It would be the members...
They can leave the room now. And I'm saying is that, instead of physically leaving the room...
I understand.
They can just leave the table, so they don't have to go out of the room. Alice?
I'm going to suggest another way of reading this, because I've been trying to figure out what was the intention here. So in the paragraph, section H, the last section of the paragraph, the big paragraph, combined total of weighted votes in that, to what, fifty percent of the weighted votes present shall constitute majority approval. It says thirty percent of the weighted votes present. So that's a weighted yes vote, right? So it doesn't actually speak to abstentions that are not voting. It just says weighted votes present.
A person who abstaining, abstention is a person who is present. So then you're not, you don't have, so that if the extensions could, would therefore count as a no.
But it's only speaking to the total amount over fifty percent. It's not talking about the ones under. So you could read as combined total of... Combined total amounting to over fifty percent of votes present.
Of the weighted votes present.
Right. So the weighted votes that are less than fifty percent, it doesn't really matter how those are assessed.
Now, let's say that you have six, let's say, ten people. And let's say they have the same vote, except for one who has eleven percent. Everybody else has the same vote. And the five, the five, five yeses, and five no's, and the five, and five extensions. And the extensions include the person with the extra percent. That would fail, because it's not fifty percent, more than fifty percent of those present.
So you have your, you have your weighted votes, you calculate the weighted vote present today, which might be eighty-five percent. It's going to take more than forty-two point five... It's going to take more than forty-two point five to pass a vote because the weighted vote present is eighty-five.
Somebody to lose themselves in weighted vote present drops.
Drops.
And therefore the threshold there, yes, drops.
So you're saying if only, if only your quorum is present, it's only fifty percent of those people?
Correct.
Okay, so then in, okay, let's say the quorum is not...
In almost every case, the quorum is not present.
If there were five votes within the room and three votes against, that would affect the issue and one person abstains. In the current system, that vote would count, five to three. In the suggested system, the abstaining person would back away from the table saying, I'm not voting, no vote, we would not have a quorum. So the vote would actually not count at all.
Correct, so it would not work if there, if you are worried about getting a quorum. But if somebody can do that as it is now, they could leave the room and go to the bathroom and you don't have a quorum, it's the same thing. You have to assume that people would be, you know, not trying to play politics or anything.
I think you're treating this as a bug, I mean, really, it's a feature. I think the whole point of this language is to require fifty, fifty percent of the weighted votes present. And what we've been talking about is a way to essentially undo the intent of the language because it is different from what we've been used to. The agreement is different from what we've been used to. The intent of this language, pretty plainly, is fifty percent of the weighted votes present, especially when you read that in conjunction with quorum requirement. Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're talking about undoing a provision whose very intent is to cause the result to be...
The quorum is the number of members present, it's not the weighted vote present.
Right. Right, but if you're, if you're, if a representative is here and counts for the quorum, even if they choose to abstain, this says they, they count as the baseline against which fifty percent is calculated, and that is the feature.
Does anybody who is near understand if this was a discussion they had for the intent of this?
No, I, I was there and, and I don't think that we...
It didn't, it didn't come up?
No, but it's a plain image of it.
Well, people get, you know, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that if we had a discussion with the people involved that they would understand it that way. I don't know one way or the other, but I do know for a fact that, that, that it has been expressed to me by people in the past about this concern about an abstention. And I'm just saying here again, I'm not in love with this, I don't really care that much. But it gives, bringing the issue up to the membership because it is a change and for those people for whom this is a problem...
Well, the reason I, the reason I responded as I did is because, yes, I was present at the room when we put this together, but, you know, we didn't draft all the language of this. As you know, counsel for the school committee took the ideas that the working selectance group came up with, gave us a draft, we voted on the draft. All of that is very interesting historical background, but the key point to remember is that the language that we all came up with was voted on at sixteen town meetings. This is the language. So when I say it's a feature, not a bug, I mean, it's not just the people in the room and the people who were talking about it, it's everybody who voted on it.
But I'm willing to do whatever the membership wants, I don't really care, Jack.
I'm actually sympathetic to Vince's concept. It will require people, if they leave the table, I think, to declare whether they're leaving the table permanently. Because under your reading, if I get up and use the restroom, I'm still technically present. If I get up and get in my car and drive home, I'm not. And it's going to be difficult for whoever's manipulating the spreadsheet to make that determination unless the member declares that they're leaving. And that's, I think, you know...
I think it's just you walk out of the room, or you, or do we say walk away from the table?
Yeah, if you're out of the room, as far as I'm concerned, you're not present, temporarily.
You know, it's... Not present for the vote.
Not present for that particular vote. The only question is to extend that, that's what we've always done. The only question is to extend that as a courtesy for those who don't want to have to actually leave the room under these circumstances.
But so what do you do if, if someone leaves the room and then we give them all the quorum?
Then you can't take a vote until they come back.
In any case, they don't have a quorum.
That's a different situation, you don't have a quorum. If they wait for that, they come back.
That would happen in any case, if, if we went under, whether, whether you count the table or for the next votes.
And I think if you want to be not present, you gotta be out of the room.
Finally, any objection to that? Just leave it the way that is. Okay, but be, be aware that effectively in a vote, an extension is now, you know, starting on July first. Okay, great. So that finishes the items, we went through them about, about the time that I thought. I think that we're going to, let's remember that as we bring up this new system, we're going to undoubtedly make some mistakes and things aren't going to work out the way we want them to. And we're going to have to make some adjustments along the way. So we're kind of in experimental phase now, and let's keep that in mind. Let's not lose our temper if things don't go quite right for a while.
Could I just see again if people who were willing to do the spreadsheet were willing?
Could we, could we?
We should have a record on what we did.
We took a vote.
I just wanted to send you this spreadsheet.
It was all what she can. So we have... We're not going to change how we do this, we're trying to... Okay, do we'd like to put on the table to approve the two thousand sixteen seventeen meeting date to a school committee final decision this time? Discussion. What's that? You can vote now. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion at the table, please raise your hand. That would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You may end this.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Vokel.
Thank you. At the last meeting, we discussed the failed vote policy and we submitted to the MSBA a failed vote report and they acted much quicker than I anticipated. On their board meeting on May twenty-fifth, they discussed it, they didn't have to take a vote, but the executive director recommended that we be given an extension until November thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, to secure local approval. There was a discussion and they, they, I was surprised, I guess pleasantly surprised that the board and the treasurer herself were very well aware of the challenges that we've been facing over the last few years in securing local approval. They were very much aware of Belmont's vote. They asked several questions about the vote and what we intended to do, which was explained in the report, but was clarified a little bit. And we've been reaching out to folks in Belmont. Jack and I have talked a couple times about how to do that best. What we have been doing and folks, representative town meeting members from Belmont have been coming for tours. I think we had five or six last week, there's some more scheduled this week. So we're trying to just answer folks' questions individually. And that's been very helpful. It's slow and tedious process, but given the vote of fifteen communities that did approve the building and the anticipated results of the Arlington vote today, where the polls close in thirty-seven minutes, we, we believe the message needs to get out there more and that more questions need to be answered for folks in Belmont. As far as next steps go, I know there's a meeting scheduled with the stakeholders in Arlington on January, June twentieth, eight o'clock in the morning. My understanding is that the MSBA will be there, as well as DESI, to answer questions and serve as resources to the conversation going on. I know there's been a lot of, I don't want to say behind the scenes, but there's been a lot of conversation with individuals in different of our communities, with folks from Belmont, and that needs to continue. I would anticipate at the July meeting that the school committee would discuss revoting the authorization under sixteen D, which would start sixty day clock again, which would give Belmont Town Meeting an opportunity to hold a town meeting, a special town meeting in September after the summer was over. And if that vote was unsuccessful, we'd still have time to, with the deadline of November thirtieth if necessary, and I'm hoping that it's not a district-wide ballot before the thirtieth of November. So I guess that's, I'm hoping most everyone is aware of this review, but if there are any questions in regards to some of the other conversations, Mary Ellen.
So, and do you have to go through the same process in the, in the head of Belmont, it was a special town meeting, they voted down again. Do you have to once again go back to the MSBA with a letter of why you felt it failed and then get a response to them before you go to a sixteen N?
Um, we went and submitted a report, which is required under their review, but within this, the report we already submitted, we laid that out for them. If this vote failed under sixteen D, again, we said in that report in all likelihood the committee would vote to go forward under sixteen N.
Okay, just wanted to see what the difference was, you know, with how you approach it, you know, going forward.
We sort of laid the whole arc out for them, so we'd be just, you know, following through on what we originally said in the May report.
So in the event that it does go to a sixteen N, the towns that are going to leave, they're still required to hold a...
That's my understanding, yes.
I would see that that's fair to the towns that stay, but that's just my opinion. Is there no special provision that they could not do there?
I think this was something I think that came out, did discussions about the withdrawal and I think it was stated, I can't remember the sources, but that under state law, as long as you're a member of the district, you can't be disenfranchised for the vote count. Residents in those communities can decide that they don't have a force in the game and choose not to vote, but as long as they are members of the district, when the vote is taken, they have to have the ability to weigh in the vote. And I just think it's unfair to remain in the towns, but that's the very...
Vince.
Thanks, Jeff. Mary Ellen, I agree with you, I think it would be unfair to the towns that are remaining to count the votes of the towns that are leaving, but as Jack says, there's no way to have a district-wide vote and disenfranchise them. However, well, however, my understanding that the school committee, after a district-wide vote, still has the authority to either proceed or not proceed. And so my point being that the school committee has a policy could say that when we make our final go or no-go decision, we will be guided by the votes of the towns that are going to be in the district and paying for this building. In other words, you have the vote, Foxborough votes, for example, but you don't count Foxborough's votes when you make up your mind after the election. And it seems to me that that would preserve the, the integrity of the towns who are going to actually pay the bill without, you know, having to work around disenfranchising.
I was just going to say that the scenario you were talking about forcing a town which has already voted to leave the district and will do so a year from now is one of the reasons I supported going back to town meeting room again.
You don't want to use them.
You know, and that and the fact that the fifteen towns that either actively supported or accepted by virtue of not bringing it up to town meeting would eventually be asked to pay for the district-wide election even though they had done, they, they had had their special town meeting for, for the agreement and they brought it up at their, at their annual or a special town meeting with building project. It seems to me fair, Vince, to go back to the town meetings first.
I'd just like to ask Vince a question, to get some clarification. Are you saying, are you saying, Vince, that we could, the school committee could discount the votes of certain towns, that, that, I mean, discount the votes of certain towns and decide, well, we're going to issue debt, although we have to have approval to issue debt?
Yes, you need approval to issue the debt, but you don't need approval not to issue the debt. So you can hold the vote, and let's say the vote comes out and it passes in a district-wide vote, but it, it only passes by including the vote of the six towns that are withdrawn, or possibly seven. And the, the school committee can then come back, digest those results and say, all right, if we only considered the votes of the towns that are actually going to pay the bill, it would have failed. Therefore, we're not going to authorize the debt.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Alice.
I just wanted to remark on the irony of the concept, thank you.
Craig.
Any other questions? Moving on to the Specialized Parents Advisory Council update, I wanted to, I have a brief report. I met with the new officers, myself and Amy, Roar, ex-director of Special Ed, they're here tonight. They've accomplished a, a number of things in reorganizing the CPAC and setting up a foundation for, for next year. There are new bylaws that have been developed. We talked about having at least four meetings per year. Some other things around having a meet and greet early in the year. Talked a little bit about some of the priorities in terms of transition programming to college and beyond. We talked about having some workshops with some other CPACs in our district. I think one of the challenges that we talked about is getting adequate enrollment to have sort of a critical mass of, of parents so we can get some things accomplished over the year. Any school committee member that would like to attend any of the CPAC meetings is welcome. We'll make you aware of that through Liz, as long as I know, so we know if we're going to have a quorum, then we would need to warn the meeting properly. But perhaps, Amy, you could introduce the CPAC officers, or you could introduce yourselves and say hello. We anticipate a CPAC presentation in the fall around more of the issues and integrating in with the School Improvement Plan. Just say hi.
Hello.
Oh, go ahead.
My name is Bill Garby, I'm delighted to attend it tonight, I'm at Lexington Rising, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carol Yell, I'm a student from Town Carroll, but I'm secretary. And part of my role is going to be trying to get the word out and getting our people together and getting information, if not by person, but by information sharing. So let's hope that I won't take minutes of the meeting and things like that.
I'm Suzanne Reaven, I'm the chair now. Kind of like Carol, we'll be trying to do a little communication and getting some parents, incoming parents to be involved in CPAC as well. I'll have a senior next year, so will Carol, so we're hoping to engage some freshman, incoming freshman parents to this CPAC.
Great, looking forward to to working together more closely. Yes, Mary.
So I remember once before, and I don't believe that I got an answer, but I did ask if we could find money for a mask cap.
Yeah, that's in process.
Okay, can you just let us know when that happens? I think that that's a great resource for parents.
Yeah, we talked about that, we're going through some technical requests and receiving of requests and we expect to have that in, by July, I would expect.
Thank you.
School Building Committee.
School Building Committee report.
Carmen Reese from Concord is now the moderator of the town of Concord and she's no longer going to be representative of the Board of Selectmen. Concord has nominated or asked that we nominate Alice Kaufman to represent the town of Concord on the Building Committee. You have her bio, she was at the last housing committee meeting. She's eminently qualified, so I would like to nominate Alice to be on the Board of Selectmen Committee of Concord.
Say your motion.
To a point, Alice Kaufman is representative for Concord, replacing Carmen Reese in to update the School Building Committee membership roster for submission to the MSBA, I have requested.
Discussion.
Discussion. Seeing no discussion, move to vote all in favor of the motion to table. Passes unanimously.
That completes the report.
Assistant superintendent, Mr. Honig.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of scholarships donations that have to receive. In accordance with policy BBA, the, uh, the list of scholars who receive are page twenty-three in packet.
I will that we accept the donation, just a second.
Discussion. There are none. Move to vote all in favor of the motion to the table. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval disposal of surplus equipment. This evening at the table, I provided a listing of surplus property. We try and do this once a year, until it's the end of the year, to gather property that either obsolete or that's been replaced, or maybe in some level of district care that is not worth the district to, um, to go through the care process. I provided a listing of, of the equipment, and just wanted to point out a couple of things. You'll see a considerable amount of equipment from the HVAC shop, as you know, with closing that program held, and we're gonna be moving forward with the, we're gonna be creating the advanced manufacturing shop in that particular area. So a lot of that equipment is built for surplus. In auto body, there was some auto body equipment that was stored with some plumbing equipment that when we cleaned out one of the warehouses, so we've identified the old auto body equipment that could be removed. We also have a two-person scissor lift that we bought a number of years ago, used at the time. We've since replaced that with a more efficient scissor lift that can accommodate more areas in the building and the exterior of the building. So we declared that, or asking, seeking that we declared that a surplus. In the carpentry area, we bought two new planers with more efficient equipment, so we had an older planer that we're asking to surplus. And then there's, uh, up at the, uh, the childcare center, the lease that MIT has for the childcare center being operated by Bright Horizons will be expiring. It's scheduled to expire on November first. We're in discussions to see if, if they have, they've indicated their willingness to leave earlier, and the tenant Tremont School is gonna be occupying the space, is interested in coming in earlier, so we've been working with them on this transition. And part of the transition is dealing with playground equipment that was installed by Bright Horizons about five or six years ago. It does have value, they're not interested in removing it, and the new tenants aren't interested in retaining it, so what I'd like to do is sell that as part of the surplus and any proceeds from the county district's development fund.
Jack?
Kevin, did we purchase that equipment for Bright Horizons?
We did.
So they're just gonna abandon it and we'll, even though it's not ours, we'll sell it and whatever we can get.
That's correct. The intention would be that the successful bidder would come in dismantling and removing the pieces.
And do you believe that there's value there over the, the dismantling and disposal cost? Because oftentimes landlords end up incurring a cost as opposed to getting a benefit from taking care of tenants.
It, I believe it does have a benefit. Is there a motion on the table?
I move to declare the property on the attached list as surplus property. Second.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion on the table? Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Regarding FY16 budget, on page twenty-four, I'm requesting the, the school committee vote to transfer the sum of two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand between function codes. We've identified surplus accounts, and we'd like to transfer those to accounts that have run over during the course of the year. You will note on page twenty-five through twenty-eight, we provided a summary of, of the line items by function code, as well as detailed analysis showing the breakdown between salary and non-salary accounts. And as of the time we did this analysis, we were projecting an operating, uh, unexpendable turnback of about two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars. The policy and, the school committee policy requires any transfers between function codes be voted by the school committee, and we give a point that the transfer, uh, the request is transferred.
And this is on what page of our packet?
It's, uh, page twenty-four.
It's the FinCon. Thank you for the FinCon.
Uh, yes, the finance committee, all members of whom were there that night and are here tonight had a chance to review the detail, and we asked a lot of questions, and we recommend approval of these transfers.
Jack? Just by, just by way of explanation, rather than asking Kevin a question, um, part of the reason why this is required, even though there's a surplus, is that the school committee administration is not allowed, under school committee policy, to overexpend the thousand budget codes by a certain amount without approval of the school committee. So this is the way to ensure that we're approving the expenditure where those thousand-level budget accounts have gone over.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion on the table? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next item is regarding bid results. I included in your packet a memo on bid results. I amended that memo. I included it at your table this evening. A, in the revised memo, you see that we didn't receive one response from private machine tools, the bid amount that was, uh, that was submitted was four-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. This is to, uh, to purchase the CNC machines that we're using for the advanced manufacturing shop, and this funded from the five-hundred thousand dollar grant award that we received from the state.
Alice?
Um, is there some kind of warranty associated with these?
Yes.
So do you have to renew the warranty, you know, in a number of years?
I believe that the initial warranty is three years.
So can you take the remainder of the money from the grant and put it towards future warranty renewals?
No. The, the grant is specific as to how it needs to be expended and amounts of the grant can be spent on software, small tools supporting the, the equipment, and the room prep, as far as getting the gas, air, electrical, all of that stuff set up. Now this requires no vote, this is informal, is that correct? Yes, that's correct. That's, thank you.
And finally, my last item, again for information purposes only, is that the finance committee has been working and reviewing the draft template of the OKEB trust that I presented to the, to the full school committee, um, back in, in March. There was some concern expressed by the, the finance subcommittee that although that, that trust agreement we used in other school districts, it doesn't necessarily meet the intended purposes of the fund the way that is envisioned by, by the finance subcommittee. Uh, there's been a considerable amount of work looking at other trust agreements from other towns, uh, and also from the Mass, uh, Government Finance Offices Association, looking at different templates to try and pick the best, uh, the best aspects of those to see if we can compile, um, a, a listing of the, uh, the content that we'd like to see in the, in the OKEB trust agreement. So, um, at the last meeting, Jack Weiss has been researching a lot of these, a lot of these agreements and putting together sort of a bullet point outline to try and capture, again, some, uh, some of the, the aspects that we'd like to see the trust agreement contain, that to be renewed next Tuesday night at the finance subcommittee. My intention tonight is, was just to give you an update where we were, since we haven't really reported that from the school committee in March, but I wanna assure the, the committee that that's been an active process, and it's gonna be the finance subcommittee that ended last couple of meetings. And Jack, if you'd like to add anything, I think that captures the topic.
Just two comments. First, we're obviously gonna go back to this group to make sure that, how we're envisioning the trust comports with how other people are doing it, and at that point, then we'll turn to an attorney and say, you know, please draft up the legal language to follow the conceptual, rather than working from somebody else's agreement and trying to tailor it.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say thank you to Jack for pointing out that the draft we originally looked at becomes a much more complex and elaborate structure than anything we envisioned the need for. So why, why build a Maserati when a Ford pickup would be, so that's where we're at. Thanks, Jack.
What if, what if you like Maseratis?
The school can't afford a Maserati.
It was also too complicated.
Yeah, well, if, we, we would have been paying people to do things that are already done. Fortunately, it was much more practical, Jack.
Mr. Havan, actually, please, my report. Thank you very much. Subcommittee report, the Department Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluations Subcommittee. You all, uh, you all have on the table, in your packet, I should have gotten the table, in your packet, a copy of each person's end-of-cycle assessment. So what we will do, we'll, uh, it'll, it'll come under the vote to approve the subcommittee's recommended salary assessment, so I'll, I'll tell you in just a minute. And, and then we'll have the discussion, put the motion on the table, then we'll have the discussion about the evaluation and to, uh, the assessment, and invite school committee members to ask each other about anything, vote that, that, uh, assessments that you may have questions about or clarification. You can also ask the superintendent anything, and also, Dr. Phil has the same opportunity to, to make comments about the assessments, to ask members about the assessment if he wants to. So just to get the discussion going, how these, how the, how the, I think it unfolds. The, the subcommittee recommends that the superintendent receive a salary increase for FY17 effective July first, two thousand sixteen, through June 30th, two thousand seventeen, that was one year. Salary increase of three thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars for a total annual salary of one-hundred-ninety-three thousand two hundred and two dollars. This is a two percent increase of his, of, of, of Dr. Phil's FY16 salary of one-eighty-nine four fourteen. And this is what the con, the contract, his contract says, that we can, um, offer salary increase if we choose to or, or none, but we could not exceed two percent. Two percent of, from the, of the previous year's salary is the, the extent that we could recommend. And the subcommittee recommends that we do offer him, uh, offer, uh, increase his salary by two percent, uh, and it costs him three thousand dollars, three thousand something eight dollars, as, as in our, this, this measure. Would you like to make the motion? So move to the second.
Okay.
Mr. Horton, we can please leave the discussion. So the discussion now is on, one, it can be on the salary increase, or the assessments that we've all filled out. If you have questions for each other, or need clarification, maybe it was written, or if you have questions for Dr. Phil, and the same courtesy is extended to him as well.
I have a quick question. I think, was it last year we thought that the, for Commonwealth Education, they said for evaluation that we filled out, was that just a pilot, a one-year thing, it was certain questions that had to be asked on the evaluation?
The, um, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I remember what form we need, but what we did look at when the subcommittee put together, clues about his, the assessment packet, was to look at the elements, elements of the, of the evaluation that TESC has established, to see how they aren't incorporated or substituted, or, under the, the four goals that, that he chose, that we voted on to, to assess him on, to evaluate him on. And that's, so that's what we did.
Oh, I thought we had to use the form that was, was subscribed in a certain way, that we had to use the form like we did the first and second year.
Yeah, we were able to, uh, adapt the form, which is what we did. We did that last year, too. We used, well, last year we had, what, thirteen goals or something? But, uh, we were able to do that, to use the form that we have. Then, if you remember that we distributed at the last meeting, a self-evaluation that Ed did, the superintendent did, which it feeds into this data, that, part of the data that we used ourselves to assess him. So that's, that's what, that's the way it goes about. Jack?
Three, hopefully, quick questions, Dave. One, internal one. I presume that the subcommittee has had this recommendation queued up for a while. Curious why the motion and the numbers are just being presented verbally tonight as opposed to being in the package?
Yeah. We met last, we met last Monday, or last Wednesday, pardon me, that was why it didn't appear, and the fact, the fact I ran home to get them, that's why I left the newsroom. But you're right, that was, you might call it oversight, but you couldn't have, you couldn't lead it the last Wednesday. In fact, it's a, it's a good point, next year will be different. Thank you.
Two, the follow-up questions. One, I shouldn't remember, but I don't, how does that two percent compare to the salary increase that the teachers down there negotiated, however?
I don't have an answer to that. Is anyone here?
It's the same.
Same, I do. And three, I, I'm fuzzy, but I remember a few years ago, um, maybe it was that contract from a little time, we looked at salary and compensation relative to peers or other, well, technically, did the subcommittee review that and get a knowledge or not?
We just looked at the language that, we looked at the language that was in Dr. Phil's contract, and we did not compare it to what is occurring in other places at this point.
Uh, just as a comment, though, when they created, when we created that contract, we did. So that contract was created after a very thorough review of comparables, about two percent was put in there.
Yeah, definitely.
I also believe that although, maybe I'm, I'm wrong here, although you didn't come up with the exact number here, I think that at a previous meeting you did mention at least that two percent was the number that was in the contract.
Yeah, I said, I thought I said that today, too.
Not to exceed two percent. So we understood the, so the two percent was raised, but you're right, we weren't given a number higher than that.
Right.
So will this be on the website, these evaluations, also be posted or whatever?
As they were last year.
Can I just ask how you, how you came to the decision on what you, um, for the, well, we, to why we chose two percent and not something smaller? Yeah, well, probably because of nothing to two percent.
That's right. Well, we, uh, looking, I would say, generally, you can chime in, too, looking at the evaluations, of course, there's a range of evaluation, uh, or assessments, uh, the ratings on, on these assessments, but we felt that the great majority of them would suggest, if I can use that term, that two percent was an appropriate way of. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Eleven in favor, opposed, one, uh, two opposed, extensions, one abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. Horton, you're on again, Secretary's report. I mean, that the, that the minutes of May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, we approved as presented.
Second.
Seeing none, all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. Every one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Thirteen in favor, extensions. Oh, you weren't here, so it's, uh, twelve in favor, two abstentions, abstention. Uh, the motion carries. Is there a second? I just wanna say thank you. I didn't hear a second, if you don't wanna go. All in favor of the motion to adjourn?
Aye.
See you in weighted voting season.